One.
Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen September 15, 2020 meeting. This is a remote participation only meeting. And please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anybody is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the meeting of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. I remind you that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the number, the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post the record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First off, I want to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting, but I do want to, before we begin, just to remind everybody that to disable their videos if they're not speaking or posing a question and to mute their audios as well on their computers. And if you're on the phone, you can mute your and unmute your phone by pressing star six. That way, we won't get a lot of feedback. I also want to say that if, and especially stress, if you don't want us, if you don't want us to see you eating your dinner or, you know, walking around your home, you might want to disable your video so that, because everybody can see. And so we're going to proceed with a roll call of the Board of Selectmen, and we'll start with Selectmen Matters.
Present.
Selectman Dinkins.
Present.
Selectman Castro.
Present.
Selectman Kokolas, sorry.
Present.
All right, and the chair is present, okay. So tonight, our first order of business is to accept the meeting minutes of September 8th. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes and accept them?
So motion to approve?
Okay, second. I had two motions, okay. Are there any edits or additions to the meeting minutes that you want to deal with? Dean, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have two. One is on page two on the public announcements. Down in the second line where it says October 22nd, I think, or 28th, I think it should read probably October 8th, that's the date of the flu clinic, I think, if I'm not mistaken. And on page five, the very last line on that page, where it's, he added to the warrant as a member of the board. I would like to insert the phrase believed that the board had committed, so it would read, as a member of the board believed that the board had committed. And also, there's another one on that page in the middle, right in the middle, the sentence that reads, it was, this is the third paragraph, it was noted that the board is required to call a special town meeting but not to act on a referral, at the present, not to act on a referral at the present time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, those are my edits.
Thank you. Any other edits or additions from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a roll call to approve the meeting minutes as amended. Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectman Dinkins.
Aye.
Selectman Matters.
Aye.
And the chair says aye, so those have been approved, 500 as amended. Thank you. All right, so our next order of business, I'm going to go through the agenda just so that everybody's clear on the public announcement and agenda item request and public comments. And this next portion is public announcements and agenda item requests. This is a place where we're not deliberating, but this is to put future things on the agenda or to make an announcement about a community event. When we get to new business, we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, which speaks to the items on the business agenda, and those include the coronavirus update, a follow-up to our meeting last evening, the bench donations, roadway project update, and special town meeting review and vote to close the warrant. And then, then after we, at the end, we have public comments on the same, same thing after our discussions and any actions we have. We are having a public hearing this evening, and the public hearing is, is just that. That's where you will be able to speak during the hearing, ask questions, and make comments about what we're talking about. So that's different than on the business agenda side of the meeting. So that's a special hearing that we open and we close, and it's formatted in that way. Seeing, okay, so to move on, the pub, anybody have, any of the selectmen have a public announcement or agenda item request? Corey.
Actually, I had a question about your previous statement, just for clarification purposes.
Yep.
So last evening's forum on the COVID situation in Chatham, I was, I had made a comment, I was hoping that during our business agenda, specifically items one and two with the COVID-19, that we were going to have public input during those agenda items. And I'm just looking for some clarity on the, on that, and if that is the case, or is that not the case tonight?
Well, I had intended that this would be, because we had a substantive public forum last evening, that this would be our meeting with the Board of Health to decide that. If the board wishes to, to change that, are you looking to change for this particular discussion items one and two, or just items two, Corey?
I'm thinking one and two, because they kind of go hand in hand. More so two, but one and, one and two are kind of very, very connected to each other, so.
Okay, so I'd take a, I'd take some feedback from the board as to how they feel about that for this evening, for this one item. Is there any discussion here? Dean or Jeff?
Okay, who goes first?
Jeff, I mean, Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no issue with what Selectman Matters is proposing. If it were just item one on the agenda under C, which I, that's the weekly coronavirus update, I probably wouldn't share that perspective, but because item two is on there and because it is intimately connected with item one, I'm complaining, I think it would be probably helpful to allow contemporaneous public comment during that portion of the meeting for one and two for tonight. So I think that's really a follow-up to last night, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, Jeff, your thoughts?
I'm fine with it as well, Madam Chair, thanks for asking, but I'm fine.
How about you, Peter?
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Jeff. You remember, it was when we were discussing how we wanted to run these, that there were a couple of, we discussed, there are some that are important. You know, it's, it's not, it's, let me just say, I guess I really don't have a problem, however, we spent two hours last night, an hour and a half with public input from some forty-some-odd people. And I guess I could argue myself and say, all right, there are some that weren't able to do it, and we're going to do it again. We could have some, some input, so I guess I'll go, I'll follow through, let's have it, and let's see how it goes, as much as we did spend, we had a community forum, why do it? But I get it, I believe in community forums, that's where you get public input, a lot of public, not that it won't happen at a Board of Selectmen meeting, not that people are not used to it, I don't want to make a big deal about it, but I guess I'd go with it now.
Okay, well, I'm hearing consensus from the board, and I'm going to honor that for this evening, that we will, and just please note to the public that the, the business agenda to item, I, and, I mean, item one and item two, under, under business agenda, will, we will accept public comment during that discussion and deliberation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And so I'm going to go back to the public announcements and agenda item requests from, I see Jeff's hands up. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A constituent has brought forward, I think, a hole in our process, when a citizen's petition is brought forward that affects rezoning and could affect the butters, there's no formal notification required to an abutter for a citizen's petition. I wasn't aware of that. I did check with Ally, and Ally said we're on the right hand of God, legally, she checked with the AG's office, but I think we need to, I think we need to have baked into our process, should a citizen's petition affect the butters, we need to make sure that we notify those abutters, whether it's the planning board, or Jill's office, or somebody, make sure that the butters are well aware that could be changes to folks zoning that they need to be aware of, and they need to be able to weigh in. So I think we need to, whether it's an agenda item or not, I think we need to bake into our process, it can be a very short, very short agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other board members, Peter?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to echo that, I didn't realize that either, and I agree with that, I think we should do it.
Okay, thanks, we'll, we'll deliberate that another day.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so do we have staff agenda item request? I know that Judith Giorgio, Judith, you requested a.
Yes, hi, if it's okay with you, I'm going to just share my screen so I can put up the poster for the flu.
Yes, go right ahead.
So we have planned a drive-through flu clinic on October 8th, it's going to be held at the Town Hall Annex from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's for eighteen, adults 18 years and older, and we will have the extra strength, so-called vaccine for anybody 65 and older. And this year, we're going to do a little different, we're having an online registration. The website, the, the address is clinics.barnstablecountyhealth.org for people to go and sign up. Or if they have difficulty signing up online, they can call the Council on Aging or the Health Department directly, and we can assist them with the signup. So that's no, October 8th at 10, 10 to 12, then we will be making appointments, and it's a drive-through, people won't have to get out of their cars, we'll have it all set up, and hopefully it will go smoothly. So, and I also wanted to let the public know that if they want to get the flu shot before then, the Barnstable County is having a, a drive-through over at the Barnstable County complex on September 26th. No appointments are necessary for that, it is an 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. clinic, and you just show up, and you can go online to the Barnstable County website and get a form to fill out ahead of time if you'd like to. So that is on September 26th at the Barnstable County complex. So I'll take questions if anybody has any. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, are you frozen? Vice Chair Peter, do you want to take over for the meeting?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Get onto the schedule. By the way, I just received a text just for, I was going to shoot it, mark a note, that it seems that our TV reception is a problem. I got a couple of notes from a couple of people. Okay.
We had requested Comcast for a service call for us, it was bad last night, so a Channel A team made the call, and they should be addressing that pretty quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, I got, I got feedback that it was bad last night as well, folks, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's see, anybody else for public comments? I don't have the, I'll see, I see, it looks like Elaine Gibbs has a hand up, is that correct?
Yes, but Frank was first, Frank Messina.
Okay, Frank, I see you on, on our screen, go ahead.
Frank, your microphone is muted.
You're on mute, Frank.
Thank you. I respectfully would like to request reconsideration of a agenda item, which I had requested about a month or so ago. I'm extremely mindful of the, the scope of what the Board of Selectmen is about and town staff, especially in terms of the COVID crisis and everything else going on, but, you know, things are loosening up with some of the other boards and commissions, and, and we are busy, you know, in terms of doing things that we're supposed to be doing statutorily, specifically the subject of saving 68 Shell Drive, more or less, in our opinion, and in our archaeologist's opinion, the oldest intact circa 1700 house in Chatham. I, I would like to, to request that the Board of Selectmen, in addition to an agenda item at some near-future date, to potentially, you know, ask staff to, to bring some kind of a meeting together with the interested parties. There's a lot going on, the community development staff is working with the owner and other people in terms of some options, and we have been successful in saving some parts of the estate, specifically the circa 1700 barns, which unfortunately are going to be going to sandwich at the Nye Family Museum. So very simply, I did send a email to some of the selectmen that I had email addresses for, with a little bit of background, so anyway, that is my request, and I hope that you will consider the action requested by the Historical Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Up on the list next is Elaine Gibbs.
Yes, thank you. I may have missed it, but I was wondering if at some point we can have an update on the fish pier, I don't know if it has to be an agenda item or just announcements. I don't know if we've signed off on that and have a full certificate of occupancy, and if there are any outstanding issues. And a number of people mentioned that the elevators taped off, and I didn't know if that's because of COVID, or if it's not working. And so if we could just have an update on that, it'd be helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, it looks like Stephen Buckler.
Yes, thank you. I was going to make a comment earlier, I was prepared to say something along the lines of what Corey Matters was saying, that we're suggesting where we have it more conversational later, so I applaud the fact that the board has decided to make the item on COVID continuation from last night's brainstorming, that it become more conversational. So I applaud you, thank you, I'll, now I will hold my comments until then, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Stephen. Next up on our agenda are public comments, and that's public comments for, for issues on our business agenda, which now would exclude the, the public hearing in our business agenda has to do with coronavirus. So do we have any comments that anyone would like to make?
Peter Shireen is now on the phone.
Okay. Hello, Shireen.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can hear you, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and, and, and we just started with public comments under new business.
Oh, we did, public comments under new business, is there anybody else that wants to make a public comment under, or anybody would like to make a public comment under new business? I cannot see you, my internet is down, so I'm on the phone, so I'm going to need some assistance in, in having people just speak out their name, and I'll take, I'll take a role of your name as we go forward. Anybody who'd like to make public comments on new business? Okay, hearing none, can you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, this is going to be a little difficult. All right, we're going to move to the public hearing then, on the tax classification hearings, discuss the tax rate, and it's Finance Director Alex Halela and Assessor Ardell Kelly. But first, we need to have Clerk Matters read the, the hearing notification before we get started. Corey?
All right, Town of Chatham Board of Selectmen Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 15, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. remotely to the Microsoft Teams application to consider the percentages of the FY 2021 tax levy to be borne by each class of taxable real and personal property. All interested parties are encouraged to attend, signed the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Corey. Alex and Ardell, who's going to be making the presentation tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Alex Halela, Finance Director, I'll start off, and as you mentioned, Ardell Kelly and I believe the Board of Assessors are also in this meeting, should the selectmen have any technical questions or concerns that require the Board of Assessors or Ardell Kelly to address. But in your packet tonight, we have a memo regarding the FY 2021 tax classification hearing. The four options on which the board has to consider every year are the residential factor, the open space discount, residential exemption, and small business exemption. I'd like to note that the Board of Assessors met on September 3rd to discuss all these options and voted their recommendations to the board, and I will present those recommendations at the end of this report. So again, as you might recall, on September 1st, there was discussion on option number three, the residential exemption, where the board discussed this to great extent, and I asked, I recommended that you review that information in preparation for this discussion. So again, on their meeting of September 3rd, the Board of Assessors met to make their recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, it's your call to vote on these every year. So on the matter of classifying the tax rate, the Board of Assessors recommends that the Board of Selectmen vote a residential factor of one, so each class maintains 100% of its full value tax share and not shift the tax burden from the residential and open space classes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. On the matter of an open space discount, not to grant an open space discount, and at this time, there actually is no property within the Town of Chatham, which would be eligible for this exemption, this classification. On the matter of the residential exemption, the Board of Assessors recommends not to grant a residential exemption, which would shift the tax burden within the residential class from residence to part-time residence. And on the matter of the small commercial exemption, not to, not to grant a small business exemption, which would again shift the tax burden within the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes from certain small commercial properties to other commercial and industrial properties. And as noted in the agenda report, this is the way that the Board of Selectmen in the past has voted for the Town of Chatham, so it's the historical pattern of taxation within Chatham. Further in the report are some of the justifications for this classification, and I'm happy to try to answer those questions, or have Director Kelly answer those questions, if you have any particular items, I would ask that you address that now.
Shireen, you're muted.
I did the mute face. Anybody from the board that has questions? Dean, I see your hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, it's not a question, but under the residential tax exemption, I think it's clear to point out that the shifting of the tax burden isn't just to the part-time residents, but some portion of it will also shift to certain full-time residents, i.e. those full-time residents whose valuations are over the tipping point, and possibly also some full-time residents whose properties are held in trust or LLCs.
Yes.
That's just a piece of information that should be out there, depending, depending on their legal status, thank you.
That is correct, and I think we pointed that out at your. That is correct, and I think we pointed that out at your meeting on September 1. But again, as Selectman Castro stated, if you're above that certain tipping point, assessment would go up for full-time resident, full-time residential residents, and also, the exemption is only on your primary residence. So if a resident owns more than one property within town, only their primary residence would get the exemption. The other residents, or the other properties would be taxed at the higher rate.
Thank you, Dean. I think Jeff had his hand up then. Peter, you're muted.
Thanks, Shereen. Thanks, Madam Chair. I don't mean to short-circuit the discussion at all this evening. This is a public hearing, but I am going to put two items as motions, and then hopefully it'll be seconded and we continue the, we can continue the discussion. But I would move that the Town of Chatham continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one and to reject the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption. That's the first part of the motion. Second part of that motion is move to authorize the use of the signature stamp for the tax rate forms and to authorize the Finance Director to sign for the Board of Selectmen electronically for all forms necessary. Again, not to short-circuit the discussion, should there be any, but I believe we, the Board of Selectmen at least had a very full and fair airing of this issue on September 1. I thought it was excellent. Thank you very much.
I'd second that, Madam Chair.
Okay. And Peter, did you have any continued conversation on that matter?
I would, you know, I agree with what Dean mentioned about the tax exemption. I just want to make a couple of other comments because there may be some people that didn't listen to everything, but I think it would be worthwhile for them to do so. I think the important part is there is a regulation out there that allows us to do the residential tax exemption, but the point for me is, is it really good for Chatham? And is it appropriate for Chatham? And there are a couple of other reasons not to do it. One has to do with where these are, there are about 15 towns out of, what, 351 that have used this. On the Cape, there are three, and one in Nantucket. The point being that most of these are used for large towns with a ratio of businesses and second homeowners and part-time owners to residents of 80% to 20%, or, you know, 75% to 25%, where the movement of the, there's a smaller movement of money around. We're at more like almost 50/50, or 57 and 43%, which changes the dynamic. I also, our part-time residents, a number of them called in and made, not called in, but made comments about how, you know, what, how much they use, and they're 63% of our tax rate already, and they already are paying a property tax over a value, if a home value is over $500,000, and most of those are, they're, you know, we have a break-even point, which is close to $2 million, which is, but a large portion of those homes are in second homeowners, although we do have over 100 and some odd, 700 and 170 some odd homes that aren't. So for me, you know, it does more harm than good. It's going, it would be divisive, and to put a point on what Dean said, it would be divisive not only between our year-round residents and our summer residents, but it'd be divisive among our residents, among all year-round residents for a number of reasons. I believe we should be able to use our resources and our effort to take care of the issues we have in Chatham without making a tax policy like this. And I'll say, if there's more information that comes out after people have seen all of this and they want to discuss it again, fine. I mean, we could do this every year. So, just generally, I can't, I would support the motion that was provided by Mr. Dykens. Thank you.
Okay, Dean.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Just a procedural point, I think it's, this is a formal public hearing. I think we should hear from the public first before a motion is put on the table. I'm probably going to support the motion, but I would ask Selectman Dykens and Selectman Kokolos respectfully to withdraw the motion at this time and then offer it after the public comments come in and the Board members have spoken, all the Board members have spoken, if they choose to substantively on the issue. That's, but again, it's just a procedural point.
Jeff, hearing muted.
I try to be faithful about muting when I'm not speaking. No, I'll certainly withdraw that, Selectman Castro. I understand your point. I was just trying to move things along. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, and this is Peter. That's a fair point. I agree.
Okay, thank you. Alex, your hand was up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to point out, for the public and for the Board's information, that the FY 2021 tax rate right now is estimated to be $4.98, which is exactly what we had projected when we presented the budget to town meeting back in, on June 22. Also, the values of the town increased by less than 1% this year, and we have an excess levy capacity, meaning we could have taxed up to an additional $2.1 million, exactly, $2,176,408.75 that is excess levy capacity, meaning we're not raising those taxes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Dean and Peter, your hands are still up, but I thought perhaps we should move forward with the discussion to see if the Director of the Assessors or the Assessors' Chair would like to make any statement, then we'll move to the public. John, I know that you're on. Would you like to make any, John Burke, would you like to make any statement?
No, I think Alex and Dale have really covered it, and everything we went through with the Selectmen's meeting two weeks ago really showed every intricacy of the whole thing, so we're, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors was unanimously in favor of maintaining the classification of one that we've done previously in previous years.
I agree. I thought it was a very thorough presentation. Alex, okay, so that we're just going to ask the public who would like to speak during the hearing, and you can raise your hand or you can speak out, and I will, I will note your name. I don't see anybody wanting to speak on the issue. Okay, so I guess that we'll bring it back, and do you want to reintroduce your motion?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved that the Town of Chatham continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one and to reject the residential exemption and the small commercial exemptions, first part of the motion. Second part of the motion is to authorize the use of signature stamp for tax rate forms and authorize the Finance Director to sign for the Board of Selectmen electronically for all forms necessary. Thank you very much.
And the second, Peter?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion from the Board? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on this. I'll take a roll. Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Kokolos.
Aye.
Selectman Metters.
Aye.
Selectman, did I say Kokolos already? I'm sorry. Selectman Dykens.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Did I get everyone?
Yes.
I usually make a log. Okay, so the motion is passed. Thank you, and Alex, and thank you to the Assessors and to the Director of Assessors for this work and for the presentation last week. It was very helpful. I motion to adjourn the hearing.
So move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Do we have to take a roll call to adjourn the hearing?
Yeah, I would.
A vote? Okay. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, thank you. Hearing has adjourned. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to go on to our next, into our business agenda meeting, and our first order of business is the coronavirus update with Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Robert Dunkinson, and our Town Manager Jill Goldsmith, and then we will follow up with the COVID-19 Community Engagement Forum of September 14, 2020, with a joint discussion with the Board of Health. At those two agenda items, we will be inviting public comment and questions at the appropriate time. So, Dr. Dunkinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. So, just a quick update, because I know we had a fairly lengthy meeting last night. You have another discussion coming up right after this. So, just a quick run-through for tonight's numbers. Worldwide, we are at 21, 29.4 million cases, and we are over 930,000 deaths. In the U.S., we are at 6.5 million cases, and we are slightly over 195,000 deaths. In Massachusetts, as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we have 125,393 confirmed and probable cases, and we have 9,225 confirmed and probable deaths in the Commonwealth. For Barnstable County, we currently have 1,687 confirmed cases and 170 confirmed and probable deaths. That number luckily has not changed substantially in the last several days. And in Chatham, as indicated and as shown on the website, we currently have 30 confirmed cases dating back to the start of the epidemic last spring, and the same two deaths, unfortunately, that we've talked about before, among Chatham residents, confirmed deaths due to COVID-19. And those numbers have not changed substantially in the last week or so. We've had no new reported COVID-19 confirmed cases in the last week or so, so that's a good thing. There hasn't been a whole lot of new update coming out of the state today, you know, primarily a lot of discussion centers around schools, because many of them are reopening. As everyone knows, the Montomoye District reopened yesterday. We have not had any phone calls from the school, so that's a good sign that things got off on the right foot, and hopefully they will continue to do that. The other topic of interest, if you will, during state calls is Halloween and what's going to happen with that holiday coming up here at the end of next month, and unfortunately, I can tell you right now, we don't know. DPH has not sent out any guidance, but I suspect there may be some guidance coming out of the Governor's Office in the not-too-distant future regarding Halloween. There are other jurisdictions around the country, the largest being Los Angeles, which has basically said no to trick-or-treating on Halloween, and we know in a lot of jurisdictions, the recommendation is no haunted houses, because obviously, social distancing is extremely hard to do. But once we get some definitive information, we'll be sure to get that out to the community. So with that, I think that's it for the update I have for you tonight, because obviously, you're going to be talking about this topic some more in your next agenda item. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Dunkinson. Any questions for Bob? Any questions for, from the public for Dr. Dunkinson?
Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine, anybody else? Okay, Elaine, go ahead.
Yes, I just wondered if Dr. Dunkinson knew about any enrollments in the Montomoye School District. I've heard from a number of people, and it could totally be a rumor, that 100 students have been added to the district, and I was wondering if, you know if that's the case, and what the stats are on that. Are they summer residents who are sending their kids here, or are they coming from other districts that may not be opening? So, if we could have an update on that, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't know an exact number. I do know there have been a fair number of newer enrollments in Montomoye, as well as a lot of other school districts on the Cape, as people have chosen to remain on the Cape for the school semester rather than going back to the larger cities like New York or Boston, but I don't have an exact number.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Dunkinson? And just a note, Bob, I know that anecdotally, there was some last-minute enrollments yesterday. We heard from Dr. Carpenter, and that he was looking possibly to create a better assessment in, you know, in a week or so. Well, I also know that there's a lot of people that are unenrolled out of the school to homeschool, so it's interesting dynamic all over the Cape. Our update from Town Manager Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So this is our first week, we were accepting appointments by the public on Tuesdays and Thursdays at most town offices, except for the Community Center, which is only open to the park program, and that has, there's a lot of enrollment today. It started yesterday, and the park program is doing really well for after-school and then preschool as well, so pre-start-of-school time for that park program. And we've had a few appointments, let's see, today, a few appointments Thursday, but not much, but certainly the public needs to come to the town offices and to make an appointment with the office that you would like to conduct business. And we have a hand sanitizer here, gloves, masks, in case the public needs that if they forget it when they come in. And then I know that we had a walkthrough with Tim Wood from The Chronicle, so I expect there to be a story, and so he took pictures of the workplace modifications, and many of them are going to be permanent, and so staff is working with that. And we had our return to work last week, while most employees had been working in rotation or remotely and have been actually in the offices. And most times, we all came back to work at certain offices, and that's gone pretty well. And then just for your next agenda item, we will have Town Council Pat Costello on the call too, to answer any questions, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jill. Does the Board have any questions? I see Dean's got his hand up. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's really not a question, but I, it occurred to me as Jill was talking about the reopening of the town offices, that the trustees of the Eldridge Public Library at their meeting tomorrow, and I'm the Board's liaison to that group, is going to be discussing the reopening of the library. I know they have been, the staff there has been working on that, so I guess the message is to stay tuned, because I know a lot of people are interested in going back into the library. I suspect it's going to be on a very limited basis, just as the town opening is, but it is going to happen at some point fairly soon, I think. Thank you. I don't speak for the trustees, but I thought it was important to bring that piece of information forward.
Thank you, Dean. Any other comments or questions for Jill from the Board? Okay, hearing none. Are there any remote participants that would like to ask Jill a question? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Jill. Okay, we're going to move on to the second part of this, which is a follow-up to the COVID-19 Community Engagement Forum we had last night, and it will be a joint Board of Health and Board of Selectmen discussion. I know from the Board of Health, we have the Chairman Beckley on, the Vice Chair Sheeran. We also have Dr. Ward. I'm not sure if we have Mr. Barron Broman or Dr. Hanson on, but if they could speak up, let me know.
Yeah, Noble Hanson on.
Okay, thank you, Noble. All right, so I just, a little recap of what happened last night. I thought that the meeting went well, and we held the meeting to get a sense of the red designation that the state had got, given us, and to listen to the community feedback and get in questions on the town's COVID-19 positive numbers. Tonight, we're holding this discussion with the Board to contemplate any actions. And I know we've been balancing people's health and livelihoods, and I think we've been doing a fairly good job, but the concern is for the health of the community first and foremost, and it always has been. And I guess some of the questions and discussions we may have tonight is whether we expand on any of the mandates that the state has given us, and also to, but I think we also, our designation was based on a population, our year-round population, and not on our summer population. And so I think we really have to sort of step back and look at the bigger picture of how things have gone for us to date. Things could have been a lot different and a lot worse, and they weren't. And I think it was through good, practical approach to educating the public and the community at large and being very diligent in what they were doing. We can't, we can't, we can't always expect everybody is going to be compliant, but, you know, I think honestly that we have done a good job as a community. But to say, as saying any further, I'm just going to open it up to the Board, and then to the Board of Health, we'll start a discussion, and then we will pose some questions, we'll get some questions and feedback from the public on this one business agenda item. The Health Agent Giorgio is on the call, as well as Dr. Dunkinson, and our Town Council. The health agent Giorgio is on the call as well as Dr. Duncanson and our town council, Pat Costello, as well. So I had, see that Cory's hand is up, and then Dean. So why don't we start? Go ahead, Cory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little follow-up. Have we had received any response from the state about kind of the discussion we had about numbers and population? Because, you know, we had made the presentation, or Dr. Duncanson had made the presentation last night about, you know, clearly with our fluctuating summer population, the numbers kind of will go up. Because in, in theory, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, we could have, pull a number, ten positive cases that reflect the Chatham numbers. Those could theoretically be ten college students who are traveling, you know, they're studying throughout the, you know, the United States, anywhere, any, any state, but none actually residing currently in town. And that would throw us, it could potentially throw us into the red category. So have we received any kind of response or acknowledgement of the, you know, the scenarios that we pitched last night at the forum?
Dr. Duncanson, can you speak to that matter?
Yes. No, I have not received any feedback from the state other than what the phone call I got just prior to yesterday's meeting, when I was given the number the state was using for Chatham and was told that the state was going to be doing something, issuing something later this week. They spoke to the issue across the Commonwealth because Chatham's not the only town that's been raising questions with regard to the number. And so they were going to be putting something out, and that's the best I can tell you. I haven't seen anything come out yet. I suspect something may come out tomorrow when they come out with the new weekly update, which has the map and all in it, that there may be some additional amplifying information as part of that, but that's just an educated guess on my part.
Okay. I guess this is a follow-up. Would it, you know, collecting data and categorizing data can always get difficult sometimes. I don't know if there was ever, you know, there's ever, trying to put this into words, you know, could you ever foresee there being data saying there's so many positive cases in a community and then saying X amount are actually within the town, some are outside of the town? Would that be a viable prediction at some point, or do you ever see that ever happening? Or do you ever see any benefit of it, to be honest with you?
I don't see any real benefit to it. I mean, you know, the numbers that are really important to us are the numbers of positive cases among Chatham residents because, you know, or people that are in the town on a long-term basis. Obviously, if somebody's here for, you know, shopping on the Main Street for a day and, you know, that wouldn't be a critical number. But if somebody's here for a longer period of time and so could contribute to community spread within Chatham, that's what would be important to us. But you know, as we've talked about throughout this entire circumstance, you know, it's difficult because we only get notified of cases of Chatham residents. You know, if people are here in town from other places on the Cape, other places in Massachusetts, or frankly, anywhere else in the world, and they're positive, we wouldn't necessarily know about that. And, you know, it wouldn't show up in our numbers because our numbers are only for people that identify Chatham as their residence, if you will. And that's why, you know, as I indicated yesterday, you know, I'm aware of at least one case where we have a college student who's away at college in Central Mass, but obviously, when he was tested, he put down Chatham as his home address because that's where his parents probably are, and that's probably where he lives in the summer and whatnot. And so it shows up in our case, even though right now, he is not here. He is in Central Mass back at his college, and that's where he's self-isolating and whatnot. So, you know, it clearly makes it difficult to get a real good handle on exactly what's going on. But, you know, obviously, the critical thing to us is how many cases do we know of in Chatham? Because that's, that would help us decide whether or not there's community spread going on.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Cory?
Not at the moment.
Okay. I believe Dean had his hand up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another procedural point, I think that the Board of Health should be asked to formally convene their meeting by taking a roll because they did post this as a meeting of their own, I believe. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think in order to make sure that we're on good, solid ground here, I would ask that. Then I do have a couple of comments and a couple of questions.
Okay. John, did you post this as a meeting? I didn't, I missed that.
I think we did.
Okay, would you take, would you convene your meeting, please? I thought we were just having a joint discussion.
I would like to do a roll call on the Board of Health members who are on this call. Dr. Noble Hanson, are you on the call?
Present.
Dr. Alan Ward, are you on the call?
Present.
Ron Broman, are you on the call? Ed Sheehan, are you on the call?
Yes.
And I'm on the call. So we have a quorum on the call tonight. Thank you, Shereen.
Okay, thank you. My apologies for the procedural mix-up. All right, Dean, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, Cory's question to Dr. Duncanson about basically disaggregation of data, separation of data is an interesting one because this has been the problem with data since, since this whole thing started nationally. And, you know, we have information that's put out by the CDC and the number of cases, and Dr. Duncanson, you know, recites them each, each week because this is what is put out. But there's no breakdown of cases between symptomatic cases and asymptomatic cases. My understanding is that the deaths, the number of deaths is, reflects a different coding system than is present elsewhere in the world, whereas if someone dies with the disease, but not necessarily from the disease, or perhaps, perhaps simply aggravated by the disease, that's listed as a COVID death. And I think it's important to understand that because everyone says we're making scientific, we're making decisions, policy decisions, based on scientific data. The data drives the decisions as well, it should. But we need to understand that, that the data sometimes may not be as helpful in fine-tuning our decision-making, and it would be great if we could get the type of breakdown that Cory was inquiring about. I just wanted to, since Town Council is on, on the call, last night, we heard, and I suspect we're going to hear also some suggestions for this evening, this evening for possibly adopting more stringent requirements or protocols than the Commonwealth has adopted for the town of Chatham or for establishment of the town of Chatham. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, specifically, I guess, with respect to feeding establishments. Pat, does the Board of Health, is there a distinction between the authority that the Board of Health might have versus what the Board of Selectmen can do? My sense is that the Board of Selectmen doesn't have a whole lot of authority or say in these area, in this area, that it's largely within the parameters of the Board of Health to adopt these types of public health strictures or regulations. And secondly, is there, is there a distinction in terms of what the Board of Health could do between enforcing existing statutes and regulations that might be town statutes or town bylaws or regulations and Commonwealth statutes? And adopting, and the Board of Health's adopting new regulations, don't those regulations I would submit have to be strictly grounded on some statutory or other legal authority? I just think we should get those parameters out. And another specific suggestion was made last night by one of our citizens, who I suspect will make it again tonight, and I think it's important to get this clarified. Because last night, the chair of the Board of Health, I think quite rightly and correctly, expressed the view that the Board of Health has very broad and expansive authority in the regulation of public health. But I think there may be some other additional legal parameters that should be understood so that both boards can properly assess any type of suggestions we might get. We may have to call upon you a little later after those suggestions come in, but I did want to sort of lay, see if we could lay out a legal framework at the present time.
Pat, can, you want to speak to that now? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I think to Dean's first question, Board of Selectmen and Board of Health clearly have what I would call joint jurisdiction over restaurant operations. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen is the local licensing authority for the town, so any of the statutes or regulations promulgated by the Commonwealth that relate to the issuance of victualer's license or alcoholic beverage's license, so forth and so on, would fall within the jurisdiction and purview of the Board of Selectmen. Now, as the board knows all too well, one of the key determinations that the board has to make and consider when considering the grant of a license is the suitability of a premises for the licensed activity. That's a pretty broad standard. I do believe that the, the primary intent of the legislature in establishing that criterion is to make sure that the physical aspects of the premises are appropriate and suitable for the licensed activity. Nonetheless, if you wanted to give that a broader definition or scope, suitability of a premises could certainly also relate to the ability of the proprietor of the licensed premises to safely and conveniently operate the premises for its intended purposes. And that could include health considerations as well. Nonetheless, I do think that where we have Board of Health that, under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 111, has very broad authority over public health issues, the Board of Selectmen would likely defer in large part to the expertise and knowledge of the Board of Health with regard to those types of issues. So I don't think there's any exclusivity, Dean, between the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen. I would suggest that the Board of Health, given its broad jurisdictional purview under Chapter 111 and the regulations relating to, you know, communicable diseases and dangerous conditions to the public health, would, would serve a primary role with respect to this particular COVID situation as it relates to preventative measures or measures to properly sanitize and clean facilities. Thank you. Now, with respect to the latter question, the Board, the Board of Health's authority, it is very broad under Chapter 111. But notably, what, what Chapter 111 specifically authorizes the Board of Health to do with respect to diseases dangerous to public health appear to be primarily of a notification basis. The Board, Board of Health is authorized to receive reports of cases of disease dangerous to public health. It is obligated to report cases of dangerous diseases to the Department of Public Health within certain time periods. And it also has the authority to consult with the Board of Health, I'm sorry, the Department of Public Health regarding the prevention of dangerous diseases, and to send to the Department of Public Health weekly reports of deaths relating to such dangerous diseases. So that in and of itself indicates, in my view, somewhat of a legislative intent that a local Board of Health is anticipated to work in conjunction with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health with respect to dangerous disease situations that may arise within the community. Now, that being said, the Board of Health also has a very broad mandate under Chapter 111, Section 31, to adopt and enforce reasonable health regulations or restrictions. Now, in my view, that legislative authority vests in the board the right to determine in its own right, without the need to consult or be advised by the Department of Public Health, to adopt reasonable health regulations for the town of Chatham. It has done so thus far since the outbreak of the pandemic, the mask-wearing requirement, et cetera. You know, the social distancing requirements are pretty much mandated statewide, but our local Board of Health has taken reasonable improvement measures to focus on those areas of the town where there are larger congregations or denser congregations of people, and they have adopted regulations above and beyond that which the state has required. I think that is legally permissible.
Hi, I'm here. Sorry. Hi, thank you, Pat. So the next person to, Dean, are your questions answered? The next person is?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, so that was helpful, Pat. I think that our Board of Health has taken a leadership position in terms of the masking on Main Street. So I think we've kind of answered our own, our own question, but that was helpful, knowing that the Board of Health can trump, if you will, excuse me, but it can be, you know, it set its own set of guidance and rules and regulations locally for the town. You know, I'm wondering if, if anybody's heard whether any other town out there has taken a standard approach or a standardized protocol approach to positive cases in restaurants? Whether anybody across the state has a protocol in place that we could mimic, seeing as how the only other hotspot, if you will, never mind the fact that we've been designated a red zone, I think probably due to erroneous data, now that I sort of understand it a bit. But, but the only other hotspot I think one could even describe is in our restaurants, in our restaurant workers. So I just wonder if there's anything out there, if anybody has any guidance on what other towns, what other Boards of Health have done in terms of identifying what a standard protocol might be for positive cases amongst restaurant workers. We seem to be struggling with it, that's all. So, and I, I for one would welcome, you know, a standard approach to it that bakes in testing, deep cleaning, waiting period, quarantining, et cetera. I just think, I just think we have that as part of our fiduciary duty as members of the board to protect the public health. So I would be interested to hearing both from anybody that might have heard about other approaches and from our own Board of Health. I thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. I, I know that Nantucket's got an uptick of cases recently, and it's in the trade, it's mostly in the, in the trades, not in the restaurants. So I think it's in different sectors, but I haven't heard anything from any other community at this point. I don't know if Dr. Duncanson or Judith has heard anything in any of their discussions with the Department, the Department of Health on the state level. Dr. Duncanson or Judith, have you heard anything?
Yeah, I have, I have, I have not heard of anything related to other towns and municipalities imposing anything tighter than what the state has. I don't know if Judith has either.
No, I haven't heard anything. We have weekly, twice-weekly calls with DPH, and people ask a lot of questions along these lines, but I have not heard of anybody creating anything stricter than what the state is already requiring.
Thank you, Judith.
I can certainly raise that question with DPH and ask them if they're aware of anything, and yeah, we'll pose that question to them.
Thank you. Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair. To my knowledge, most communities, including the large cities, are pretty much adhering to the safety standards and checklist that the mass DPH has promulgated. I do know that when the city of Boston first opened up its outdoor restaurants, particularly those in the North End, there were numerous and regular complaints about the lack of compliance or adherence to the protocols that had been established. And, and I know that the, the city health department did convene a special meeting requiring that all licensed restaurant owners attend the meeting, and in essence, city officials read the Riot Act, and I do recall there being, you know, threats, if you will, are the potential of license ramifications, suspension, revocations of licenses if the entities did not strictly comply with the governing protocols. But to my knowledge, even Boston has not adopted any standards that are above and beyond or more stringent than those that the state has required. As I, as I was saying earlier, in response to Dean's question, what it came down to here was both the public health and the licensing authorities of the city flexing their, their powers a little bit just to let restaurants know that there could be serious ramifications if violations occurred.
Jeff, I'm sorry I cut you off, so.
Yeah, no, there's, one thing we do, in my place of employee, is we, we have a little Yeah, no, there's, one thing we do, in my place of employee, is we have a little gun that shoots your temperature every morning when you walk in, and you have to log in, you have to sign your temperature into a log, you have to sign off on it. You know, it gets a little early warning indication, if anybody has any kind of temp, they're gone. They're not allowed into the premises. So I think that is one prophylactic measure, if you will, that might give us some early warning comfort for some of these businesses. I'm just, I'm just seeking some way to balance, you know, livelihoods and lives and safety, that's all. And I'm looking for guidance. That is one thing we do that I think we get great comfort from. If someone spikes a temp, they're gone, they're not allowed in. We mask up all the time, all the time when we're in masks, all the time. But at some point, you know, and I've said this before, at some point, this does fall back on personal responsibility. And that's responsibility both for employees and for employers. So employers have to be responsible for their business. If they want to be responsible for their business, then they need to impart to their employees that, and they need to impart discipline on their employees and say, you got to mask up, and you have to wash your hands, and you have to be socially distant where it's appropriate, blah, blah, blah. I mean, they just, there is some responsibility for self-discipline here by employees and employers alike. And, you know, how we enforce that is another whole discussion. And again, and I'm not beating anybody up, I think our Board of Health has done an excellent job, and I think the town as a whole has done an excellent job, and in some ways has really led the way. And it's unfortunate that we were designated a red zone, if you will, because I think it was based on erroneous data. I'll be quiet there, I'm interested to hearing other thoughts. Thank you very much.
I know that Dennis has started to have some concern about some complacency with some of their restaurants. They're, they seem to be falling a little too, you know, becoming lax in their, in the segment of, expressed some concern about that. But one of the things that really struck me last night was when we talked to Judith, and she made the comment about the fact that they had been doing some sort of spot visits to restaurants, and there had not been many issues at all all summer long. This, you know, and so I just want to be mindful of that, that, you know, that that's the case. But I just want to hear from Peter, he had his hand up as well. You're muted, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Pat. I understand, I do have a question, but I want to make a comment first. I would agree that our health department and, you know, all the folks have been very, very stringent in watching what's happening there. I know that they've received a number of complaints from people that they go out and they look at. We've had a couple of people that have not complied, and we, they've been discussed just in general terms. I believe that, you know, we talked, we talk about balance, and at the same time, I think that you look at what this state has done and where we are in a lot of ways, the balance has to favor a little bit in the, for the medical part first, because if you don't do the medical part first, as we've seen in other states and other areas, everything gets closed down anyway, and it gets even worse. So generally, I approve the approach. My question is, we've heard, I've heard two things here. One is that their states have, the state has set up a set of guidelines, and a number of restaurants or other businesses maybe not have been complying. And so the towns have come down strongly against them. I agree with that. The other is, we have a certain amount of ability to go beyond what the state has said. And my, and what, doing something with like Mr. Dyken said makes, you know, could make sense. It's an issue, it's one of those things we could do. My problem is, how far can you go without putting yourself in jeopardy when you're going against state guidelines that have been imposed by a governor because of emergency situations based upon a, I'll call it a natural cause or natural causes. And that, I think, is being questioned, too. But so how far can we really go with this? And I know it's, there's no simple answer to it, but maybe you can put parameters around it of some sort. Because I know somebody's asking...
That's an excellent question. That's the key question that I think a lot of governmental agencies are dealing with today. I mean, as you know, there were oral arguments up at the Supreme Judicial Court earlier this week with respect to a challenge filed by a number of business owners and churches and other organizations challenging whether the governor actually has the authority of the Civil Defense Act to adopt the nature and scope of regulations that he has because of the negative impacts those regulations and restrictions have had on businesses and private enterprises. What we're dealing with now, I think, is without question unprecedented. It's a novel situation, that there really isn't any legal precedent, Peter, in terms of, you know, hard cases we can look at to determine in the event of a pandemic, where does the authority start and where does it end? As I noted earlier, the Commonwealth has adopted by virtue of the governor's orders and the so-called guidances or other regulations issued by the Department of Public Health to try to address individual business activities in light of the threats that are posed by COVID. As you folks have discussed at length, the, there is a clear set and comprehensive set, I might add, of safety standards and a checklist that applies to restaurants. The Department of Public Health has, in its infinite wisdom, adopted these regulations, and then, as someone noted earlier, basically deferred to the local authorities to enforce them. We in Chatham, as well as many other communities, have wrestled with, how far do you go? How far can we go in enforcing these regulations? One thing I will note as well is that very early on in the pandemic, when the regulations started to flow from DPH and the governor, several communities did pipe up and say, well, we want to do it a different way, or we want to go further than what you're doing. And there were very clear warnings issued by state authorities that, no, you can't do that. We have preemptive authority here with respect to this matter. You have to comply with the regulations or act within the scope of the regulations or restrictions that we adopt. Now, I don't think that's clearly defined as a matter of law. However, it is an argument out there that could be made by the Commonwealth or the Attorney General's Office in the event that towns exceeded the level of restriction that the Commonwealth itself has imposed. Now, the contrary argument to that is what was alluded to earlier, and that General Law Chapter 111 affords local Boards of Health pretty broad authority to adopt and enforce its own, and I use the term with emphasis, reasonable health restrictions. So what are reasonable health restrictions? In my mind, they mean one thing, in your mind, they may mean something else. In my view, if a community were to be subjected to a particularly strong or burdensome impact from a particular situation, such as a pandemic, I think local Board of Health would have the legal authority and jurisdiction to step up its regulatory action and enforcement. Now, whether that situation exists in Chatham right now, I question quite frankly, for reasons that the Board has discussed earlier this evening and as was discussed last evening at your conference. The numbers are somewhat skewed here, and I don't think they at all reflect the nature of the demographics and the population in Chatham and so forth. But I think Dr. Dunkinson hit the nail on the head earlier when he said that the key focus on regulatory action should be in order to stem community spread, as opposed to overreacting to isolated incidents. And now, reasonable binds can differ as to where you draw that line. But from a legal perspective, Peter, it's, it's an open book. I mean, we're about to make, there is about to be case law decided in the Commonwealth, both at the SJC level, and there are also, I know, multiple cases pending in the United States District Court where claims have been asserted under federal law that state authorities have gone too far in restricting or regulating businesses. So I think six months from now, we'll have a much clearer picture than what we do right now, but I think the watchword right now is to just be prudent and cautious as to the regulatory scheme we adopt.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just would make one comment with that, and it seems to me that, not to oversimplify anything, but it seems to, we would need some kind of a trigger that would say, and I hate to put it this way, because you're responding rather than being proactive, but you'd need some sort of a major trigger that would, or event that would say, my God, you better do something. And that, of course, is subjective, too, but it'd be, okay, thank you.
And I would suggest as a corollary to that, that if and when such a circumstance did arise, and we did choose to take what would be considered extraordinary regulatory activity, I would absolutely recommend and strongly suggest that the Board of Health consult with mass DPH prior to implementing any such regulation, just to make sure that we're not going to, you know, be, you know, impugned by the Commonwealth and saying, we're stepping bombs and acting out of place before we actually even try.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Pat. That was really, that was really good. So I'm going to turn it over to the Board of Health, John Beckley, and his crew, so to speak, and see if they have any comments or discussions or questions for our town council, and we'll move forward with further discussion. John?
Thank you, Shereen. I would like to invite any of my Board of Health members to make any comments they would like to at this time. I have some comments I'd like to make later, but I'd first like to invite any board members to make any comments they'd like to make at this time. Dr. Hanson, do you have any points you'd like to raise?
I just had a question for Attorney Costello. What are the rules around public disclosure when a restaurant or a business gets a positive COVID case and then reports that to the Board of Health? I think it came up that residents should know about that so they could make their own decisions, but what are the, what are the legal issues around that?
Well, the legal, that's a very good question, and I know that Dr. Dunkinson touched on it earlier. I don't think there were any hard and fast reporting standards established right now. And the legal issues that lurk in that question are privacy rights, obviously. Privacy rights, most importantly, of patients or individuals who may have tested positive for the virus. But I don't believe there's any affirmative obligation on the part of the Board of Health or on the part of the restaurants or other public institutions to publicly disclose in any way, shape, or form the nature or scope of incidents of COVID-19. I do believe that they have the obligation, the restaurants, to report it to the Board of Health, obviously, which they have done, and I do believe the protocols have been followed. But I think the issue that is at the core of reining in broad and wide public disclosure does relate to the dissemination of health information relating to specific individuals.
This is Noble again. So some people will say, if a restaurant has a positive case and they're going through their testing and all that, they'd like to know so they can make a decision about whether they want to go there or not. But you're saying that we probably can't go ahead early and disclose the restaurant to the public?
Well, I think the devil's in the details there. To the extent that a disclosure is made that a certain restaurant may have had positive test result, I mean, that's, it's happened in Chatham twice, to my knowledge thus far. The information has gotten out, I don't know how it got out that those particular venues were the subject of the positive tests. But I would be reluctant to be affirmatively, as a Board of Health or as a town health official, affirmatively disclosing any such information on a regular or random basis. I mean, if individuals were to make public records requests, then we're obviously into an entirely different realm in terms of what information we must provide and what exemptions could provide. Most notably, the privacy exemption might come into play in that regard. But yeah, I mean, there are no hard and fast criteria established for disclosure of that information.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Is that it? Is that it, Noble?
Yes.
Dr. Ward, do you have any questions you want to raise at this point or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. As you know, I work at a local healthcare facility that has had extraordinarily good management of this. I think they've had, I'm not sure, even one or two cases of COVID, and that's quite amazing. And it's really been dependent on a number of things, but one of the things that I think might apply to the restaurant industry is regular testing of the employees. And of course, this also presupposes that the tests come back in a reasonable period of time. But for instance, we are testing, some people in certain parts of the facility tested almost weekly, and obviously, that would pick up people quickly, and they would get off the front lines, and if that could be done with the restaurants economically and expeditiously, it would be a great addition, I think.
Good comment, Dr. Ward. I don't think, Ron Bromin, you're not on the call, are you? I don't think he is. Ed Sheehan, Ed, did you have any points you wanted to comment?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you, Ed. I had several comments I wanted to just make. Number one, I wanted to reinforce the underst, or common understanding that this red designation is really a statistical artifact, and it does not, it is not a valid reflection of the relative risk of COVID in Chatham, in my, in my view. We have very few cases in town right now. I think Dr. Dunkinson referenced maybe four. And, and when you look, if you look at the big picture of how Chatham has coped since March, we've been very good, very fortunate in terms of having a total of 30 cases. That's cumulative from March through the present. I do think we've heard some legitimate question about how new COVID restaurant cases should be reported to the Health Department. My understanding, I may have this wrong, is that it's requested that they report, but it's not required that they report to the Health Department. I think that's an area the Board of Health should look at. I've also heard some very good questions raised about the role of testing in general when managing new cases in public settings such as restaurants, and I think the Board should look at that as well. And I also like the question we heard last night about what happens when it, when it becomes too cold for restaurants to have outdoor seating? And what will become, what will be the consequences of pulling diner, people eating meals indoors? Because we need to bear in mind that some of the greatest risks of infection are not restaurant workers, it could be fellow diners, none of whom are wearing their masks when they're eating meals. So we have to consider that as well. So those were my comments that I wanted to just put out there, and I would turn it back to Shereen at this time. Thank you, Shereen.
Thank you, John, and your Board for their comments. I imagine if we looked at any sort of future ideas of mandatory reporting, I don't know how that falls into legality for us, but that might be a safeguard for us. I just want to make sure that people understand HIPAA laws are important to people, privacy is important, and we can't, we can't, we can't just find out who, where people live or whatever. This is Board of Health stuff, and there is a privacy factor that's involved here. The idea of being able to get quick and easy testing, that'd be fantastic, but if you've got, you know, if you need to be testing your personal business employees, that's cost prohibitive, and so it would be really great at what Dr. Ward... really great at what Dr. Ward had suggested. But I I'm pretty confident that that particular organization probably got a grant to be able to do the type of testing they're doing. And 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 I might remark they're doing it very well. But what I see that Dean's hand, your hands up, Dean, and then Dr. Duncanson's hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I really had a follow up sub question to Pat following Dr. Hanson's inquiry about public or publicity about positive tests. And Shereen just mentioned HIPAA, I think, which is absolutely an important factor. Pat, were you also thinking that the that the Massachusetts Privacy Statute, Chapter 214, Section 1B, has a role in this conversation as well? That that's a statute for the benefit of the public? I just pulled it up. A person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with his privacy. And it's enforceable in the Superior Court. I know there's been some case law on that. I've worked with this statute in the past. But it seems, it would seem to me that has a bearing as well in terms of imposing strictures on what a what the town could do and the risk for the town if individual names were were to emerge as a result of actions taken by the town. Yeah, no, I I do agree, Dean, that that statute would have bearing or ramifications in the matter. I, given the nature of the underlying cause of the want for publicity, if you will, or disclosure, I, to Shereen's point, I think HIPAA really comes into play as a very relevant factor here as well. The chapter 214 is very general or broad in its application, whereas, as we all know, the HIPAA requirements relate specifically to a medical condition or or treatment for medical issues that may arise. And obviously, our Board of Health, our Health Department are all governed by HIPAA in terms of being required to maintain confidentiality and security of any information they come into possession of as a result of a of a health situation in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, thanks, Shereen. I just wanted to address the issue of notification to the local Board of Health because that that was raised a couple of times. And I'm just reading from the Mass Safety Standards for Restaurants. If an employer is notified of a positive case at the workplace, the employee, the employer shall notify the local Board of Health. So that already exists. To the best of our knowledge, any restaurants in Chatham have done that. And we have, you know, we reinforced that. Judy sent a couple of emails out over the course of the last several months, just reinforcing to our restaurants, you know, that they're required to do that. So I think in that vein, in terms of them notifying us, I hope we're in pretty good shape, that we don't need to address that question. Because that that is already in the standards and has already been invoked.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so we've had a substantive conversation here, more education. I'm wondering if anybody has suggestions to take any actions, want to take any actions? Jeff's hands up. We need to hear from the public. We're at 7:30. So just, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick follow up for Dr. Duncanson in terms of, yes, there's mandatory reporting or they shall report the cases to the local Board of Health. How about mandatory testing as follow up, Bob? Is there any language with respect to that in the state statute? Thank you.
There actually is. And it says, testing of other workers may be recommended consistent with guidance and or the at the request of the local Board of Health. So that language is in there. So, you know, if it was Dean, but I think, you know, some of the issues that you've already talked about, the availability of tests, the expensive test, the validity of the test, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk about, you know, the gold standard being the PCR and, you know, some of the other tests, the 15 minute whatnot test and so forth, having a high false positive, high false negative rate. So, you know, those are all things we have to take into consideration in determining whether or not that kind of testing would be helpful. As you all know, if if a restaurant worker has a positive, all the close contacts of that worker are required to quarantine for 14 days. And we've had that circumstance already where we had a positive restaurant worker, a number of their their close coworkers were identified and went into that 14 day quarantine period. So, you know, that is already in the works, you know, testing the rest of the workers. I'm not going to say I'd be opposed to it, but I think, you know, we'd have to think about it. The Board of Health would have to discuss it because of the availability. You know, we want to make sure if we're going to put restaurants through that process, we want to make sure it's done appropriately, that the information's returned in a timely manner. Because technically, right now, you know, folks that are that are being tested, like under the travel order, you're supposed to quarantine until the test result comes back. So, you know, if you want to require something like that, you potentially are shutting down a restaurant for an unknown period of time. You know, if if they were to get tested and you know, the town says, hey, you've now got to quarantine until those results come back negative. You know, so that's just something to consider. And I'm not saying I'm for it or against it at this point, but, you know, there's a lot more to consider than just saying, oh, let's let's order them all to test.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Peter, you had a question, but I did.
No, just.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. All I was going to say is for procedure wise, I think maybe we should go to the public and and then consider whether we what we want to do. And and I think in my my just general thoughts is that this is, we may have to go have the Health Department or Department of Health or look at this before we make any decisions here. Anyway, thought.
Agreed. Okay, questions, comments from the remote participants? If you can raise your hand, please do. If not, call out your name now. And I'll take, I'll take names. So, let's see. Anybody calling out their name? Nope. All right. I see. Go ahead.
They ever raised hand for.
I see it. Yep. Elaine, anybody else raise their hand? Okay, Elaine?
Yes, thank you. Just to go back to the beginning of the discussion about the state's data, talking about college students who live here and are counted here, but they're actually in other states where they either contracted it or were recuperating. That cuts both ways because we've had two clusters with a total of 20 people. I would say three quarters of them did not live in Chatham, but they're employees here. So they're not getting counted, except they spend more time in Chatham than they do in their hometowns. So, the argument is we're different because we have a big tourist population. And I would say that is exactly why I think that our Board of Health has, because they have expansive powers, they can use it in a situation like that where the governor has certain standards, but when they're not, they're not, they haven't been created for a town that goes from 6,000 to 30,000. I, I, we keep going back to the six feet and 15 minutes for the public in terms of being able to contract it. That's for the general public. That's for walking down the street. That's for walking through a large store. Restaurants are inherently different because it, by definition, it's close contact. And if you look at the CDC's Questions and Answers, when they talk about restaurants, they do have additional standards that they ask people to implement. It is because you can contract COVID, it's through the air, but that's why they tell you to wear a mask, don't touch your face, because it is, and you have to wash your hands, because your hands carry it. And the restaurants, you have an asymptomatic waiter waiting on a table, delivering dishes and glasses and silverware without gloves. That can spread the disease. And so I don't believe this is a HIPAA issue at all. HIPAA is designed to protect the rights of an individual and their privacy. But when a restaurant has a cluster, and I think it was the state that actually determined it was a cluster, they saw, you know, seven cases pop up out of the same place. And they determined, I think, gave it the name cluster. We're not asking for disclosure of individuals, but we do ask for disclosure to the public of the facility. And I am concerned specifically about what transpired with the Squire. And that's why I think the Board of Health can do something about it. The first test was on a Sunday. They cleaned overnight. They opened on Monday for lunch and dinner. But by the end of the day, they had had tested, they had tested 15 people. And three came back positive. So when the people were eating there, they did not know that 15 people were being tested. I don't think a restaurant can open until those people have been tested. They are tested because they either were defined as people who had close contact with that first person on Sunday, or they were symptomatic. So how can you open in that situation? And so I would agree with Dr. Ward that one of the options is to test on a weekly basis. Or when there is a positive case in a restaurant, that they have to close until, you know, the employees are tested. I don't know how many employees there are. But that is how it is spread. And the public has to have some trust in this. You know, to say that they're not required to tell us, when a restaurant has salmonella, they close down and they notify the public. And they they say, anybody who ate in that restaurant, go to your doctor. This is a pandemic. I think this is a pretty compelling situation. My bigger concern is that if we have another cluster, Governor Baker's looking at us. We've got had two clusters. Whether or not you agree with how they collected the data is really immaterial at this point. If he continues to see a trend like this, we could get picked, kicked back to phase two, and we cannot afford to allow that to happen. So I would hope that we make a proactive gesture to say, we, we are going to get a handle on this, and we're going to make sure we don't have another cluster because we are encouraging people to stay for a second summer. So if we don't do anything and and are more concerned about, oh, we could be opening ourselves up to lawsuits from businesses, well, you could be opening up lawsuits from people who didn't know they were in a restaurant that had a COVID cluster. And so, again, that cuts both ways. So I hope that we do, we make some kind of a gesture and and move forward so this doesn't happen. Because I think it's potentially serious. And the way to do it is to simply not open if you've got cases pending, tests pending. Let the people know. Or put a sign on the door that there's a COVID cluster. You get your own risk. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Anybody else from the public want to weigh in on this matter?
I'm on the telephone.
Okay, who am I speaking to?
This is Gloria Freeman.
Go ahead, Gloria.
Thank you. I made a suggestion last night when we were told that the Board of Health could provide more stringent regulations than the state to protect the public health. I'll be glad to repeat it. I believe we should consider stricter policies. Impacts to the local economy are deeply concerning. But our objective should be to mitigate the spread of disease and reduce mortality, especially with our age demographic.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak from the remote participants? You may speak out or or if you have the ability, raise your hand.
Shereen?
Yes?
Hi, it's Carol Gordon.
Hi, Carol.
I think I did.
I don't see it, Carol, but I.
Sure.
There you are. Okay, I got you.
Thank you. I was just thinking that concerning the situation with the Squire, and hopefully it will not be repeated at any other, at any more restaurants, but that restaurant testing should be, should be mandatory, not optional. Our main concern, as we all are thinking, is for our people, our citizens of Chatham. Businesses really need to comply. And, you know, we all want the businesses to survive, which is why we support a lot of the local businesses. But we really need to think about how it affects the people as well. And I think the people of Chatham should be our main concern when it comes to testing, or unfortunately closing down when there are clusters. And that should be our our main concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I see that Scott Corner, I believe that's how you pronounce your name, is on the call and would like to make a comment or have questions. Hi, Scott.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment, that there seems to be this belief that because of the summer population, our numbers are skewed. But as I understand it, the summer population, if one of those people were to test positive for COVID, that wouldn't count towards the Chatham number. It would count towards their hometown. So I think, I think the argument that they're skewing our numbers is really untrue. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Scott. Oh, go ahead. Did you have any more?
Well, I was just going to say, one other thing is that there could be a number of those people, the summer population, that have COVID and are spending the summer in Chatham, and we don't even know about it because they're not Chatham residents. So the reality is the case count in Chatham could actually be much higher.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the remote participants? If not, I'm going to bring it back to the board for any recommendation. I'm assuming that we, if we do make any recommendations for the Board of Health to look at. And I have Dean's hand up. Go ahead, Dean.
Well, thank you. I just a comment in response to Mr. Kerner's comment. The skewing, I think, and I think this is what Mr. Beckley had in mind earlier, is the skewing relates to the formula that the state is using because they're, they're, they're basically saying that they're taking the the seven cases, of which the Squire is one seventh, by the way, that there were seven, if 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 those folks who didn't, weren't able to hear last night. Dr. Duncanson pointed out, the seven cases that put us over the top to get the red code were a different number of people, aggregation of people from the the seven at the Squire. One of those seven at the Squire was a Chatham person, and that count among the other seven. That's what got us over. But the problem was with the formula, that they're using the population of 6,000. They're saying that it's seven, I don't want to say it's a strict denominator, it's a complicated formula. But they're using 6,000 instead of 20 or 25 or 30,000, which is the, you know, the estimate of what we have here in the summer. I I just wanted to say, I, I, I don't have a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen other than.
You mean the Board of Health?
Yeah, no, for the Board of Selectmen, I would, I would like the Board of Health to to look at, to take, assimilate the information that they heard last night and what we're hearing tonight from the selectmen and the various citizens that have participated and and propose or adopt whatever remedies they might feel appropriate, if at all. I would say one thing with respect to the issue of publicity or disclosure versus testing. The chair has already identified some concerns about testing as a as a requirement, but it may be that in the in the wisdom of the Board of Health, that that might be the right way to go. With respect to disclosure, if the town were to adopt certain or take certain actions that reasonably would lead to the the identification of an individual's health condition, that would be something that I think would place the town at liability, not just to the business owner, but to that individual. And that's, that's what would concern me. And with respect to the point, I think that Elaine Gibbs made about people innocently dining at a at a facility where people are undergoing, where employees are undergoing testing and they're, they don't know about it. That's a very legitimate point. I've thought of that myself many times. And but I would say in response to that, in order for there to be any liability, and Pat can can opine on this if he wishes, in order for there to be any liability on the part of the town, you'd have to weigh the individual's free choice to dine inside or outside. And the Board of Health is going to have to deal with inside dining very soon, given the weather, the turn in the weather. But we have a case in Massachusetts a few years back in the town of Ware, where the duty to warn was was discussed. And the town was liable in that instance. But there has to be some reasonable information that that the town has in its possession to, in that case, to to impose a duty on on the town. So it's not, it's, I just wanted to point out, it's not particularly black and white. I don't think Elaine was suggesting it was black and white, but I think it's important to get that. Nothing in the law is black and white, or almost nothing. Nothing in the law is black and white, or almost nothing in the law is black and white, as everybody knows by now. So I just really wanted to get those points out. But I would, you know, I'm not a, I'm obviously not an epidemiologist. We have some very experienced people on the board that have, who have medical backgrounds and public health backgrounds and public health experience. And, and I just have to defer it to, to their wisdom and judgment. And one last point, Bob Dunkinson read the, read the Governor's guidance, and I referred to it last night. The Governor's guidance says, "A lo- local Board of Health may quote, 'recommend' test to an establishment." It doesn't say "may require." And that's, that's a little looser than, than, it makes me comfortable, um, uh, in, in trying to impose something. And I'm not sure, I, I'm not saying I don't agree with the imposition of, of stricter, um, um, protocols. Uh, I understand what Gloria Freeman is saying, uh, and it's a very compelling argument. But we have to factor all those considerations in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I totally agree that this is a lot of, of personal choices, um, when it comes to dining out and, um, in, in, in part of the whole process of everything. I think that Jeff had his hand up and then Peter. I believe that was the, um, the way it all went. Go ahead, Jeff. Thank you.
I don't know, Dean. I thought you were, you were starting to look a little bit like Dr. Fauci there for a second, but, uh, anyway.
He went to that other, he went to that other Jesuit high school.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Uh, I, I.
Talked out of both sides of his mouth as well.
Yeah. Uh, uh, you know, that, again, this is, it's over rotted in terms of the use of the phrase unprecedented. But this is, this is unprecedented. We've never faced this kind of stuff before. And I, I think we've had an issue in our restaurants. Um, and again, the red zone notwithstanding, um, I do think it's based on a false denominator or a false calculation that includes a narrower, a smaller denominator than, than it should be. So I think we're, we're, we're red for the wrong reasons. However, we've had, and that kind of like small cluster or mini outbreak, if you will, in our restaurants, in a, in a restaurant. So I, I would be interested in, in hearing from the Board of Health, from, uh, Beckley and Company, because we have some, we do have some talented people there, on whether or not they were willing to recommend, uh, any, any other regulations that in fact might impart some more comfort to the citizenry and, and, and all of us. Whether that includes, uh, it sounds to me like the businesses are supposed to, the restaurants are supposed to let the Board of Health know if there's been a positive case, which I think they ought to. I, I think that's appropriate. And then if they have any other guidance in terms of, of testing, mandatory testing, I, I'd be very interested in hearing from them. Um, I, I think our citizenry would, would be comforted and our visitors would be comforted as well to think that we're doing something proactive about it. So, uh, I've listened very carefully to the discussion and, and, um, I don't think we're overstepping our bounds. And, um, and I don't mean to put the, put the Board of Health out there at all. I, you know, that's their role and I think we have a talented board and I, I would like to hear back from them. That's, those are my thoughts, folks. You know, I, I think we got a problem in the restaurants. And, you know, any, any help we can give them, I think we ought to give them. I think the restaurants themselves ought to welcome, um, this kind of, uh, this oversight or this, you know, we should be partners in this and, and they should want their restaurants, folks to feel comfortable in going in their restaurants and using their facilities. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be short. I agree, I, I, with, with most of what has been said. I believe that the Board of Health, uh, they have a, they have a task in front of them. They've heard from what we, what, what has said here. The whole, the whole idea of what happened at the, uh, not idea, but what happened at the Squire, can, can get a little confusing and get, and is that a triggers for, for what happened? Uh, because my understanding was, and it may or may not be correct, and I'm not going to take a, uh, you know, make an, an argument out of this, except to say that the place, the Squire was shut down, uh, after the first one was noted. Then they did other testing, but none of the other, the people that were being tested ever came back to that restaurant. So theoretically, that restaurant had been cleaned and none of those other people came back. If they did, there's a valid point to, 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 to have closed it down permanently. However, that does not preclude something like this happening at another restaurant and having someone come, come back. So that's, that's kind of, I'm throwing it at the, the Board of Health, but that is kind of a decision that, that, that they can look at and make, you know, make a, a much more informed decision than I can. And I do believe, uh, restaurants are a low margin business, uh, you know, and, and they're being hurt. And I understand. I still, I, I still put the emphasis on fixing our medical problem and, and taking care of our citizens. But at the same time, you know, they are beginning to open. And I, I agree, they, they should join with the Health Department to make sure that this happens. Because you don't have to be a, a rocket scientist to understand that if it doesn't happen and we get, we get a, another, another, uh, uh, increase in the number of, of, of folks that are, that are, that are, that are being, um, not, that are being infected, then we're going to have exactly what happened down south. And I, I still remember the, the emails I received when we first got into this with a number of people complaining about the Board overstepping their bounds. And look at all those fine people down in, down south that are enjoying themselves and they're all smiling. Well, I didn't get any emails a month later that said, gee, they're not smiling anymore. So my, I, I, I think that I, our Board of Health is, is a super group of people, very well, uh, very, not only educated, but have the town of Chatham at their heart. And I, and I, and I believe, you know, that, that what they've heard today, I think they can come up with some, uh, good, good, uh, good procedures for us. And I don't say we just shouldn't do more. I just say we have to be careful on how we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Jeff, your hands up again.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to make the point that, you know, with, this is maybe potentially coming inside or being more intense coming inside, then it's even more important than ever than right now. Thank you.
Okay, agreed. Okay, so I'm hearing that you want to, uh, sort of, um, refer this over to the Board of Health for their future discussion and, um, and recommendations. And, uh, we, that we as a board have given them enough feedback tonight, as well as the public, for them to be able to take the information, disseminate it and, uh, make the proper, um, thoughtful, um, decisions if necessary. Chairman Beckley, I just want to hear from you as to, um, your thoughts on what we've recommended to you. And then we'll, uh, we'll move on.
I think they're dead on and I will be happy to, um, lead the Board of Health through the process and deliberations to take a look at all of these issues.
Okay. Do you want to close your, um, so I think we have discussed it and, um, you have your marching orders, sort of. So do you want to, um, uh, close your meeting of the Board of Health and we'll move on to the next agenda?
Perfect. Thank you. Board of Health members, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Alan, I move we adjourn our meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second, Ed Sheehan.
Ed Sheehan, a second. Okay. When I call your name, please indicate your vote on the motion to adjourn. Dr. Ward?
Approve.
Dr. Hanson?
Approve.
Ed Sheehan?
Yes.
And I approve as John Beckley. So we have four votes to approve, so the Board of Health meeting is adjourned. And thank you, Shereen, for inviting us to participate.
Uh, thank you, John, and thank you, the Board of Health, for your thoughtful comments this evening. And we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Pat, for, uh, weighing in.
Good night.
Nice to see you.
Likewise. Have a great night, folks.
You too. Bye-bye. Um, okay, so our next item is a, uh, bench donation. Seaside Links Golf Course, Park and Recreation Director, Dan Tobin, um, is making the presentation.
Good evening.
Good, good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the members of the board. Uh, this is a pretty straightforward, uh, request for a bench on the, uh, seventh forward key, uh, donated by Trish Lancaster, a member of her husband. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board or a motion to?
Madam Chair, I move acceptance of the bench.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Any questions for Dan? He'll take a vote. Um, Peter?
Hi.
Dean?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
All right. Um, motion has been approved and we're going to move forward. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we, maybe this is a question for Jill or Ashana. Do we customarily send a thank you letter to the donor?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, that is usually done.
Yeah, I'll check, yes, Dan said it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item for is roadway project updates. Um, Cross Street and Route 28 West Chatham Roadway Design Project. And this is Public Works Director, Tom Temple. Welcome, Tom. Looks like we got a lot to, um, get filled in with, um, for this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Selectmen. Just giving you an update on some of the projects we have going on with the Department of Public Works. Uh, Route 28 West Chatham Project started up today after Labor Day. Both Gas Company, um, as well as Verizon came in on September 8th. They've been working every day since, uh, out there. Hand grid is tentatively, um, targeted to be completed on September 30th of, of their relay work for the gas. Verizon is October, excuse me, October 26th. Lawrence Lynch is tentatively scheduled to come in on September 28th and start their remedial work that they have for, um, some minor drainage. They still have to do out there as well as a couple hydrant relocations. And then they plan to start their granite curbing installation and then the full depth reconstruction. The goal right now for them is to, once the utilities, utility companies have moved offsite, they're to come in and do their full reclamation and then shape the roadway and then do the binder course and hopefully have a footprint ready before the onset of winter. They would come back in the springtime and do their top course, their permanent line painting and traffic markings and finish out that work. So right now, um, the utility companies are making the arrangements as they typically do with all the business owners to make sure that their, their work works with the businesses. So, um, right now, they've been in contact and working, coming right down the road with each of those, uh, each of those businesses and companies and, and residents that they're involved with. If you'd like, I can answer any questions you might have with respect to Route 28 before we move on to something else.
Yeah, let's go project to project, I guess. Any questions on the, um, on the West Chatham Roadway Design Project? Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, just Peter?
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
Just one, and it's, it's a little bit out of, out of timing, but have you heard anything about what we had discussed over a year ago on, on, you know, the trees and, and lighting and everything? Or is that put on hold until we get closer on?
No, the, um, what was last discussed was they, they weren't changing any of the, the hardscape or the landscaping based on the recommendation from the working group. The only thing that, that did move forward, which I did remind Lawrence Lynch the other day when we met out on the site at, at 6:30 in the morning, um, I did remind him that when we went to Boston, it was discussed that we wanted to make sure that we had the ability, the town had the ability to go ahead and to shut off some of those lights on the roundabouts if it was too bright. So we were talking about going every other, uh, and being able to turn those off if, if need be. So I reminded him that when they're doing the electrical, uh, work or the electrical portion of the underground, that they take that into consideration, that that's still something that, uh, the town really wanted to see happen as part of the project.
I just, you know, not that it's, uh, it beating a dead horse with this, with this group, but it, they, they made the point after we talked about, when you brought up the point about, uh, lighting and so forth, that they have a, um, a, uh, regulation that, that talks about, uh, town, village centers, neighborhood centers, and that they, 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 they do, I, I, I'm not sure how he placed it. I had the impression that, well, they had a regulation that they, 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 they knew they had it. We brought it up and that they were going to consider it. So I'm assuming that the consideration has been done. I, I, I don't know if we can push this later again or not, but it's, that's my only comment there. It's frustrating for me, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Anybody else, um, question on this? All right, um, next, uh, project?
Yeah, um, Cross Street. As you, as you know, um, the town of Chatham went in as part of our reconstruction of the roadway. Um, we replaced the water main on Cross Street. We did that in the spring of 2019. Uh, we were supposed to be followed immediately after by a gas company. Gas company got delayed. They then, uh, started their installation, um, in, in the fall, early spring. Then we got hit with COVID and they, they, similar to Route 28, they couldn't continue any further because their new policies where they were not allowed to go into the residential properties or, or homes, uh, because of COVID. So, um, they started out there on the 14th and they're anticipating completing that on October 9th. Um, I walked a job site on Monday morning with, uh, Lynch Corporation, early morning because he had another appointment in, uh, Off Cape. So we met out there around 6:15. We walked, uh, walked the job. He had given us a proposal under the possible county for the full depth reconstruction and reshaping of the road. So, um, he's trying to work it in. He's also been awarded through the possible county, as well as some of the various projects as the subcontractor for a lot of the paving jobs that are taking place as part of the sewer. So he's trying to work in everything together to try to keep us in line. He's waiting for the, uh, schedule from the gas company to make sure they meet that so he can follow right behind them. So our, our hope is that they finish on time, there's no more delays on their part, so we can get this thing done. I do know that, um, when we do the granite curbing, we like the champered edge here in Chatham. So when we're replacing the granite curbing that we're going to put out there, um, the intent was to have that all set. All the projects that the state has and, and people from down here, all the granite curbing is coming from Georgia. And with COVID, everything is backordered. The, the plus side of things is that because Lynch is, um, always paid their bills and have been on time, they're at a, at a high point with this company. So I don't see that hopefully being a problem on our side of things. So, um, he's, he's placing that order and making sure that we can come right in when the gas company leaves. And, uh, he's assured me at the, at the worst case scenario, because of the condition of the roadway, I've asked that, um, if there is any delay with the gas or weather or the pandemic hits again, the bottom line is I, I would like to see that roadway so it's, it's pulverized, reshaped, and the drainage all put back. So you've got a smooth, you know, base courses set in place and then finish the top course in the spring if that's our last resort. But the goal is to try to get everything done before the onset of winter is, is our hope. So, um, hopefully, you know, we don't have any issues with either COVID or weather conditions as we move forward. I'll take any questions you have on, on Cross Street as well.
Any questions about Cross Street from the board? I, okay, seeing none? We will, uh, move on to the next project.
Water main replacements. Um, I gave a list of these four streets that we're looking to do. All those streets that are involved that you see on that list, um, are, are either involved with the sewer project or in the case of Bridge Street, we have a, um, direct drill that we've been waiting and we got approval for, uh, in the early spring to do. We didn't want to do it where the boats were going to be coming through and being delivered. So we're hoping that that goes up to bid in this, this month here. We're hoping to start that in November, December and get that direct drilling done. It's going out to bid by Weston and Sampson and we hope we get good bids. And also, we're going to complete, we were originally going to have the water relay done with the sewer project because we have, the sewer is part of 1E1. And, and the gas has already been replaced out on Bridge Street. So the intent right now is because they're delayed because of permitting, we decided to lump this into a package and go out to bid and do both the direct drill and, uh, Bridge Street from Mitchell River Bridge to Stage Harbor. And that way that we can get that done. We'll go through a freeze thaw cycle, they'll come in. It's supposed to be a, um, a, um, a forced main on Bridge Street. So you're, you're not going to have much depth. So it shouldn't be an issue when we do the, the reconstruction of the road after they're through. So, um, that should be relatively a simple process once the, uh, sewer comes in.
Right. Questions for the, um, for, um, Tom on, on the Bridge Street? None? Okay.
Uh, one year, um, inspection was done on the tanks. As you may recall, we had an issue with the tornado where we had a raceway from one of the contractors on the tank had done damage to the tank. The inside inspection went through. We didn't get the formal report yet in writing. They just did the, uh, inspection today, but all, all indications are, everything looks beautiful inside. Everything came out good, everything held. So, um, we should be receiving that report in the next, uh, week or so. that report in the next week or so. With respect to the outside painting, we held off because of the amount of people that were still here. There was some draining that was going to have to take place for that, and the comfort level wasn't there, given the amount of people that were still in town, and the high, high volume of pumpage that we're doing, and the low water alarms that we have each week on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday still. We didn't think it was in, in the best interest to go ahead and to do that work now. So we held off on that, and so we'll be, be doing that work in the next couple of weeks moving forward.
Great. Any questions on the water storage tank? None? Okay. Keep moving on.
Sorry, last one I, I have, I think, is Crow Road. Actually, I have Crow Road and the sidewalks. Crow Road, we're just waiting for Mass DEP to give the approval letter once we receive that. We've already opened the bids. Robert B. Hour has won the, with the bids, they were the current low bidder for that. We're just waiting for the approval from Mass DEP, so we can award it and move forward with it. Our hopes is that we start that in October and get that wrapped up, so we, we can stop kind of babysitting that roadway for the drainage and, and get everything installed and completed. So the sidewalks, the comprehensive sidewalk, we're continuing where we left off last year. We're skipping over the section that is part of the sewer relay that we have to do between Chatham Bays and Cross Street. So we'll skip over that section, and that's been delayed for at least a year. And we're going to pick up where we left off from Library Lane and head up around, up to Seaview, where the sidewalk crosswalk is. And then we'll pick up on Seaview, where we left the sidewalk, coming down the hill where they were putting in a new driveway. We let them finish the driveway. Now we'll go past that and pick up those areas that need to be replaced. We intend to do the outside edges of that park area that's there with the granite curbing, as well as with the chamfered edges around that, as well as all the sidewalk on Main Street that needs to be done and replaced up to the rotary, and then we'll come down the other side. Intent right now is to take up four spaces, now that we're getting, at the end of this tourist season, we'll take up probably four spaces in the parking lot down behind the Orpheum for them to house the granite curbing, so it's close to move back and forth for the job site. So we'll make sure they keep that clean, and we make sure that they, they keep that so it's safe. We'll probably block that off with some large barrels and cones and tape off that area, so they can get in on a day, day-to-day basis as they move forward with the sidewalk.
Tom, I have a question for you about the sidewalk project, because we ran into, you know, business issues in West Chatham. I was just wondering if everybody's been notified downtown of the projects going on at Cross Street and Main Street, and whether there, they were going to be long periods of time that they'd be working, or would there be, like, any thought to, to not doing something, you know, if it's a long weekend, or, or a Friday or something? Any thoughts or any input from the business community?
Good question. What we're going to do is, we're going to, once the contractor gets out there, we're going to put it on our, it's on our website. We'll, we'll put it on to make sure everybody's notified when they're going to be coming in. We're just firming up the dates with Lynch Corp., who's our Possible County, a low bidder on this. We'll put it on the website. We'll describe what side we're starting with, and we'll, we'll continue. They intend to, when they come in and start relaying the curbing, they intend to come straight down the roadway and keep someone working down until it's completed, similar to what we did on the other end of Main Street, from the Lighthouse all the way to just about Homestead. We did that in a, in an order, so people knew that they were coming. And, and they've been very good. Lynch, who was doing the sidewalks on Main Street before, they'd come as they're approaching to the businesses. They'd also knock on the door to make sure that they knew when they're going to be in front of their place, and to make arrangements to make sure if they had cars or vehicles, they had to get out. They did it at a certain time to make sure that they had access to their property. They always had access by the end of the day to get in and out, if they were doing the work in front, as they're going by. After they rolled the materials and then they placed the binder down, it's not that long before you can ride right back on it, once it sets up. So it's not a long period of time. It's not like when you're dealing with concrete, which takes, you know, the forming and, and the longer time to get on to that. But, you know, we'll make sure that we were notifying them and the contractors notifying as well.
Yeah, I know that the merchants, downtown merchants, do meet on Thursday remotely through the chamber. And I know that you've been, been in conversation with Mary, so it might be a great, great way to be able to make a presentation to them, just to...
I'll talk to her tomorrow as well. We have another meeting for Main Street at night, at 10 o'clock, I believe.
Super. Great. And Peter, your hands up. Questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Tom, and it was comprehensive, nice synopsis. I mean, you put all of that into, like, two pages, and I appreciate that. I think it was Jeff that asked for the, for the recap, looking at everything that's being done here, not including a number of things, other, another projects that you have. I just want to make the comment that I was concerned last, last year, because of our stopping of, what was it, Verizon, to, to hook up, and that we, we might have some pushback, you know, this year. And obviously, things are moving ahead in a, in a, I would say, in an appropriate manner, as far as scheduling is concerned. And that doesn't happen, you know, that isn't, that, that didn't happen without a lot of effort, especially with Tom. And if you've seen him with some of the state folks and other folks, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a pat on the back this time. I've been complaining a lot. But I, I think you did an excellent job, and we're, we're moving ahead, and that's what's important. We've got a lot of bumps in the road, and we can complain about a lot of things. And I'm certainly going to have a problem with landscaping, but that's my issue. And I'm going to figure a way to figure that out, so we do it, whether it's with them or with us. So anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the time you put it. I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Peter. Cory, your hands up?
Yeah, quick, Tom, thank you very much for the report. Clearly, I have an interest in the Seaview Street project, and I will definitely be paying attention to any reports and updates and everything. But if I'm missing anything, please let me know, because I'm sure there's certain parties that you guys have no contact information for, that I could certainly relay information.
Cory, you're just, you're going in and out. You got it.
Got it? Got it. Just, I just want to make sure we keep communication open, because there are parties that probably the town does not have a contact information on, that I may be able to assist in at least communicating where the project timeline and days and impacts are. So I will pay attention, certainly myself, but if there's any other information that I might miss, and I can get some notice, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that, that would be great. And, and I know some of the businesses there also have commercial haulers that are coming in. I kind of like to need to know, like, when they're going to be coming in for certain days, if they do different businesses. So I, I might just reach out to you and try to get, pick your brain on some of those that are adjacent to your, your businesses down there.
All right, thank you.
Great. Any further questions for Tom tonight? Thank you for the update. Thanks, Jeff, for the agenda item request. And we're going to move on to the next item, which is special town meeting, October 3, 2020 warrant. We have to review and vote to close. So Jill?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Madam Chairman, in your packet, you have a draft warrant with one article. That was the petition article for the zoning bylaw amendment, and wanted to let the board know and the public see what the warrant is going to look like. So if there's nothing the board wants to add, if you can take a vote to close the warrant, and we'll get it posted as soon as possible before the end of this week. And again, just as a reminder, it will not be mailed out to residences, but it will be posted on the website. We'll have it certainly where it's required to be posted, in the post offices, and have it in the vestibles at town offices, where people can walk in and grab it. So happy to answer any more questions.
Great. Any questions for Jill or a motion at this time?
I just have a quick question. So if, if someone had a modification or an edit or a change to this warrant article, it would be made either at the planning board or a town meeting floor?
It will have to be made as part of the motion on town meeting floor.
Okay.
So we have to print it as it's presented to us.
Okay. So the planning board has no authority or power to make any modifications or edits prior to town meeting?
From what I understand, the planning board will make a recommendation. They might encourage the petitioner to make a change, but for town meeting, it's the motion that's presented with a planning board report.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Madam Chair?
Yes.
For Jeff, just, I had one similar to this at one time, and we, we, we made a recommendation with certain conditions. So, I mean, you can't change what they had, but we, you can make conditions to what they're going to do. Because if it gets back... And that hearing's on the 28th? Yes.
Yes, I believe it's at 4:00 PM on the 28th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions? Dean? You're muted. Dean, would you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add to that conversation, that my understanding is that whatever recommendations or conditions the planning board might want to make, or anybody else for that matter, they, they would have to be offered as a motion on the floor of town meeting.
Yeah, that's what I asked.
What goes in the warrant is what the petition recited, literally. That has to, that has to be what goes in the warrant. But what town meeting could be asked to vote on could be different, as long as it's within the scope of this particular petition. So...
Thank you, Dean. That's why I asked the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this, or any further, further discussion from the board?
Madam Chair, I move that the board close the special town meeting warrant.
Do you want to add a, a secondary motion?
Second, I move that the, the second part of that is, the board approved the use of signature stamps to sign the special town meeting warrant.
So a second, second from Dean. Okay. Don't think there'll be further discussion. So let's take a roll call. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. All right. So we have closed the special town meeting warrant, and approved the use of signature stamps to sign the special town meeting warrant. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last order of business tonight is public comments, and I'll, from the remote participants, I'll accept some public comments at this time. I see that Stephen Buckley's hand is up, and Jeff, your hand's up, but it's coming down, right? Okay. Anybody else? Stephen? Elaine? Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make a comment earlier during the COVID item. But anyway, it's, it's a general comment, anyway, so it's appropriate at the end. I just wanted to compliment the board for the past six months of doing, as the chair said, a good job of responding and, and planning and so forth, as far as the COVID issues and so forth. And the idea being that there's always room for improvement. And so that's what I was relating to last night, when I raised an issue that, that there, that the, I think there's an opportunity here for the town, not just the board, but, and the government, but for the town, to realize that there's going, that we're not going to go back to normal again. And things like this platform, using the technology to be able to do a better job of communicating with each other, and of being transparent and collaborative and so forth. I think a lot of private and public organizations had to do it out of necessity, and have found that they're pleasantly surprised that there sometimes has a better quality of collaboration and participation. It's not always the same as in person, of course, but that this is something to be embraced. And so I understand that the board is experimenting with a new format for public collaboration and engagement. But I just wanted to, to say that I hope that we head in that direction, and that if we are seen, not as a red zone town, but as one that is particularly collaborative, that we embrace this new form of collaboration, then I think that's where we're really embracing the future, and not wishing or grieving about the fact that we can't go back to the way things used to be. So that's just my thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Elaine?
Yes, my comment is on COVID as well. I just wanted to say that I agreed with pretty much everything Mr. Dykens said, Selectman Dykens, Dykens is to what we need to do. And I think the Board of Health has to meet quickly. I don't know if we should wait for the next week's meeting. I hope that the message that I heard tonight from some is not how, where this ends up, that for Chatham residents dining, it's really buyer beware and eat at your own risk. I think we can do better than that as a town. It'd be different if we lived in, in Manhattan. And if this isn't the time for the Board of Health to act, I don't see the point of a Board of Health. If restaurants and the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen have information about a situation in town that could adversely impact the health of our community, regardless of the business impact, because there will be no business if this continues. You know, we've got to get together as, but if that happens, we're going to have a serious problem. You know, the one thing that we have to rely on is, is transparency and trust, that we are being told everything. We are not idiots. We can handle the truth. But what we can't handle is not being told the truth. Because then you put my family at risk, you put everybody's family at risk. So I hope the Board of Health does act on this. I think this is a compelling situation. Again, if this is not the time, a pandemic of unprecedented proportion, for them to act specific to our town, because our town needs and circumstances are different. I don't know what it would be. So I look forward to their meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other comments from the remote participants? Hearing none, then I will accept a motion to adjourn tonight.
I'll move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Okay, a second.
Second, Peter?
Okay, thank you. We'll take a roll vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye, and it's 8:22. And just want to say, good night, Chatham. Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff that participated this evening, Jill, and to the IT and tech team behind the scenes. Have a good night. Okay.